I would like to call this meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Again, fire exits are located at the sides of the room, in the front and back. In the case of a fire, you will hear a fire alarm. A fire alarm at that time, please move in a calm and orderly fashion to the nearest exit. Before we proceed to public speaking, we will have a presentation. Kathy, I need to open up a separate meeting for this, or? Okay, we're gonna have a public hearing on the Public Safety Plan. It's gonna be a presentation by Mr. Tom Carleton. Mr. Tom?
Thank you, President Rose. Board, Cabinet, the public, thank you for having me here tonight. The district emergency plan is a living document. We're always updating it. We try to plan for every emergency possible. And as you'll see, we're always, it's updated. What I'm doing now is, I spoke with Mr. DeCarlo. Over the summer, we're gonna be doing additional things with our district-wide emergencies. We're gonna start doing tabletop exercises with our administrators. So the event I'm not available, we'll have people following in different roles on what to do, what emergencies. And we're also, our building-level emergency plans, which you have, but they're confidential, are gonna be uploaded to the state using drone technology. Since our roads are changing, the areas around the buildings are changing, we're gonna start using drones to photograph the area, live footage. So this way, when we do our tabletop exercises, we can show people, this is what the emergency is, this is where your evacuation routes are, and what to do. The beauty of the emergency plan is based upon the incident command system. Our administrators are trained in the incident command, and we're having a refresher course over the summer for the incident command. So this way, everybody knows what roles they have to fulfill. As usual, it was a short and brief presentation. Does anybody have any questions? The public has 30 days to comment on the plans. They can email Kathy Kevey, our district clerk, any questions about the plans. As soon as I get them, I'll address them. And we'll have next month's presentation. I'll have answers to those questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you very much, Mr. Carleton. I will now make a motion to open the floor for public speaking. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, my Vice President McGill. All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed abstain, motion carries. Speaker number one.
So, en esta noche, en primer lugar quiero dar gracias a los pocos padres que tenemos en esta sala, igualmente a la junta por reunirse. Ya comenzamos a ver que más miembros de la junta tratan de venir a las reuniones, y es muy importante que todos estén específicamente cuando hay reuniones tan importantes, porque a veces ustedes no pueden tomar una decisión, porque a veces no están miembros del board, lo cual yo lo veo como una irresponsabilidad, porque estas reuniones son dos veces al mes. Y a veces es bien triste que por una persona que no está aquí ese asunto o problema que tenga que resolverse esa noche no se lleve a cabo. So, no lo veo correcto. La vez pasada, no pude venir acá a la reunión, pero lo que yo siempre hago, siempre, los miércoles en la mañana, escucho las reuniones en YouTube, y me quedo tres a cuatro horas y cojo mis notas y se las comparto a la organización a la que pertenecemos, que somos padres de Isramapo. Y es bien triste la vez, la reunión pasada, porque cuando yo escucho esas reuniones, muchas veces lloro, muchas veces me río, muchas veces tengo muchos sentimientos cuando escucho esa reunión, esas reuniones por YouTube. Y muchas veces de esas reuniones me siento impotente, me siento atrapada, siento que no hay futuro. Y es bien triste sentir eso, porque estoy escuchando de una junta que no quiere apoyar la escuela donde mi hija va. Hay miembros del board que no quisieron votar por el Valle. Unos que sí tuvieron ese querer como junta, de querer que este distrito salga adelante. Pero ya la mayoría estuvieron peleando, literalmente, que tuvieron que llamar al abogado de ustedes. Ni siquiera respetaron que esa persona estaba en funeral. Y tuvieron que llamarlo porque ustedes no llegan a un acuerdo. Eso es una vergüenza. Y es bien triste ver cómo entre ustedes pelean para que no hagan unas resoluciones buenas para nuestros hijos. Hay miembros que están aquí, están simplemente por transportación, y eso se ve claramente en sus comentarios. También escuché el comentario de uno de los miembros del board decir que los padres solo vienen a quejarse de la comida y solo esa es la idea. Y que ustedes no tienen el poder de cambiarlo. Cuando ustedes firman un contrato con una compañía, es su responsabilidad, es la responsabilidad de todos ustedes. No digan que no es la responsabilidad de ustedes, ustedes. Ustedes firman con esa compañía, entonces ustedes cuando firman con esa compañía, ustedes tienen que ver si es que esa compañía nos está brindando, no irse por el precio más bajo, porque ese es vergonzoso, como lo hacen con transportación. Y es por eso que los buses andan como locos en la calle, porque no escogemos la calidad, escogemos el que nos dé el menor precio, y eso es una vergüenza. Entonces, cuando ustedes dan comentarios, fíjense lo que están diciendo, porque es bien triste estar detrás de un teléfono llorando porque ustedes no quieren un mejor futuro para nuestros hijos. Trabajemos en conjunto y veamos que independientemente, si estás en la privada o en la pública, mereces la misma educación. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker number two.
Hello, everyone. So, before I start my comments, I'd like to share what my seven-year-old just said. If there's a rule in school that you're not allowed to have a phone, why is there not a rule for the board to be off their phones? Okay? From a seven-year-old. Thank you. So, my comment is that I wanna share an experience that I had from the last time we were at the board until now. My son had an opportunity to go to Spain. He qualified, his team qualified as the third in his age rank, with only three goals made in there. After this trip, we were talking on the plane, where how fortunate we are, but how unfortunately is for the kids in our district in the sports department, not the ones that are constantly featured. Now, I really would like for the district to also provide information how kids can go abroad. Not only in the United States, you can get an education, you can get an education abroad also. A lot of our kids don't have the opportunity to find it out on themselves, so it'd be great for the district, the high schools, to invite abroad colleges to brighten up other options for our kids. Now, looking at how the budget is being faced and the things that are being brought up, also another thing that my little one said, why are adults acting like my age? If we want the best, and we're here for the best, why is that not provided? If we're mentioning, like the mom said, about lunches, yes, of course, like if you don't eat in the day, you're gonna be angry, angry and hungry at the same time, right? If you don't eat correctly, you can't think of an education. And then when you have adults that are not even caring about something so simple and so basic, it's ridiculous. And for my seven-year-old to realize this also, it is scary to see that a seven-year-old is thinking better than an adult. Because if she has the sense of respect that she can give into an adult, why is an adult giving the same respect to a child? That is ridiculous. We are all adults. And yes, of course, you can hear parents go off and on about all the bad stuff, because it's a lot of bad stuff. I wanna say how positive it is, how amazing the seniors from Ramapo High School and Spring Valley are making their purpose to make sure they highlight their students, their peers, when our district is not fully doing it. We need to be proud of these students. Same as we had, two weeks ago, we had Jazz Night. It was an immense success. We had a full crowd in there. And I would love to see those pictures in the district and show them to the kids. It was amazing that Mr. Smith was able to create an amazing event, and it should be open even more in a bigger space. And hopefully, next time, you actually go, because these kids are very talented. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker number three.
Greetings, shalom, and hello, Superintendent Mr. DeCarlo. Board members, administrators, and people of the public. My name is Raphael Lindor. I'm a resident, I'm sorry, I'm a president and founder of Rockland Dynasty, a youth football non-for-profit 501(c)(3). Today, I stand before you not only as a youth football coach, but as an alumni of East Ramapo Central School District, a community activist, and a proud resident born and raised in Spring Valley, New York. I'd like to start off by saying, Superintendent Mr. DeCarlo, thank you for the efforts you and your team has poured into East Ramapo Central School District, from the school curriculum to the building projects, and efforts to responsibly do what's right and be transparent to the public. Tonight, I want to address three key points about the importance of community collaboration, the central role of sports in our educational framework, and the challenges we face in maintaining these programs. Firstly, it is crucial for our community to work together. Over the past two years, our youth organization has faced significant struggles and obstacles that has hindered our ability to operate effectively. The field improvement process has been broken, making it difficult to secure resources for our student athletes. However, I want to acknowledge the efforts of our Building Facilities Director, who has worked diligently to correct some of these issues, enhance our facilities, alongside with members of East Ramapo Central School District, such as the Athletic Department of Ramapo High School, the Superintendent of Business. Thank you for your help and contributions. Secondly, sports serve as a foundation for our school district. They not only promote physical health, but also foster teamwork, discipline, and a sense of belonging among the students within our school district. Unfortunately, recent changes in fees place an overwhelming burden on our organizations like Rockland Dynasty, which is a non-for-profit 501(c)(3), which rosters nearly 90% of the kids of East Ramapo Central School District. The increase of fees over 100% has made it nearly impossible for us to continue providing the vital services. The last few years, we paid on an average of $3,000 to $5,000, but this year, those costs have skyrocketed to $25,000 just for the football and athletic fields. Finally, I urge the board to reconsider these fees of increases and explore solutions that can support a non-for-profit organization like myself and others in the community. Acknowledging our contributions to the youth of East Ramapo and explore long-term season rates would be a significant step in ensuring that we can continue to serve the community and community effectively. Thank you for your time and attention to this pressing matter. Together, we can create a brighter future for our students and for the community of East Ramapo Central School District. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public speaking. I will now make a motion to adjourn the public hearing, and then we're gonna move on to the regular meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, my Vice President McGill. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed abstain, motion carries. We will now open up the regularly scheduled board meeting, and we will turn it over to our Superintendent, Mr. DeCarlo, for the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, President Rose. I hope everybody had a great holiday last week, and we're now into the home stretch of the school year. As was mentioned, you know, May and June, there were a lot of events and things going on throughout the district, and, you know, we are gonna showcase as much as we can, and we will. And you'll see a couple of things tonight to address some of your concerns, and I'll get to that in a second. But before I get to the issue when it comes to the lunchrooms and it comes to food services, I just wanted to update the board and the community that today I had a visit from State Commissioner Betty Rosa was here. She spent much of the day here at East Ramapo, not only speaking with myself, but speaking with my team. And the conversation was around the fact that, you know, she and her team looks, like you said, at our board meetings and sees what's going on, and commended myself and the team around being transparent this year with the budget, explaining the budget as thoroughly as we could, letting you, the public, make better sense of the why we were asking for what we were asking for in the budget. She also, in the statement that she sent to the board and kind of codified that with us, that she feels that the budget that was presented to the community and to the board, and then was also approved by our monitors, Mr. Sean Farr and Dr. Shelley Jallow, you know, she states that a lot of work and effort went into it. She does agree that the budget is responsible, fiscally responsible, that it goes back, and it allows for priorities and things that should have been addressed in the past when it comes to academic needs as in regards to what our students need across our K-12 continuum, as well as the fact that it is fiscally responsible. So it was a really good conversation that we had had with the commissioner as we moved forward with regards to the budget being presented for a vote come May 20th, so I just wanted to make sure that I shared that with the Board of Education, that she was here and spent some time with us today. So I wanna thank her for her words of encouragement, and I just wanted to share that with the Board of Education and the community. So now we'll go to, now we'll go to lunch. So there's a couple of things that, in the course of this year, as you know, I've been, I was charged with coming in and being the interim Superintendent of Schools and trying to look into things. And there are some times where the Board of Education has not been made aware of things that should have taken place and didn't. This is an example that this district has monies under our cafeteria and food service funds that we have not tapped into, okay? They didn't know that. They wouldn't know that because they weren't told by previous people that sat here, and not just in my seat, but other executive directors. By the way, did you know? And the board has charged me and said, Mr. DeCarlo, you know, we keep hearing about these issues. What, if anything, can you do about it? And we continue to have these conversations. I wanna thank, you know, Mr. Tyndall, I wanna thank Mr. Stark, because we do have monies available to be able to do some of the things that you'd like to see done. So in front of you tonight, you can see the way we're gonna repurpose our cafeterias in our middle schools and our high schools. If you've been in, if you've been in any of these cafeterias, they are places where the lighting is dim, the furniture, in some cases at Spring Valley High School, they're literally eating on old, old folding tables and chairs that are 30 years old. It saddens me that we're even having this conversation. This is stuff that should have been just years and years ago. So you'll see some of the renditions of some of the work that's going to be done over the course of this summer. Now, here's really what's important, and I've heard you, the board has heard you, when we talk about food and quality of service. So we are in the process of going out, we hired a consultant, and you can see what this consultant will be doing over a period of five months, speaking with students, speaking with staff, talking about the current menu, what it looks like, what isn't appetizing, what is appetizing, what we should have, what we could have, how we can get it. Okay? So I want you to clearly understand, we are listening, and we are looking to make these changes, because it is important when we talk about health and safety and well-being of our students. And I wanted to take some time tonight to share this with you, that it's in process, we're working on it, this is not where Mr. DeCarlo was just saying this, because just to say it and it's not gonna come to fruition, it is. It's gonna happen, and you're gonna be looking at surveys, we're gonna be sitting down with students, we're gonna be having panels, we're gonna be doing taste testings, we're gonna be doing all this stuff. So if you think about it, these two things, recalibrating, repurposing our areas in which our kids eat, and then giving them better quality choices, we're gonna get where we need to go. Okay? And I can understand your frustration, but it's also a frustration on the board's part, because they've heard this, but nobody did a deep dive into say, what are some of the things we can do? These are some of the things that we can do. So I just wanted to share that, because that was really, really an important piece to answering some of these questions over the last couple of months. So with that being said, I'm gonna now turn it over to Mr. Stark, talked a little bit about where we are with some of our budget presentations, and what's gonna happen between now and Tuesday, May 20th. Mr. Stark?
Thank you. Is that better? There we go. So thank you. As you know, the board did adopt the budget at the last meeting, so that is now done. We are working on a number of both pieces online and also that will be mailed out to the residents of the school district. And what you see in front of you is a list of community meeting dates. We've done two of these. There's another one Wednesday of next week, that will be at one of the yeshiva schools. And we continue, there'll be other meetings far, you know, more than what's just on the sheet, that we are also working on with some other community groups that have an interest in getting more information about the budget and the budget vote. Who has the, oh, thank you. And really, again, it's a brief presentation today in that the budget was adopted, the budget vote, we will have a, we will have a hearing on May 6th, which is the next board meeting. That will be the official public hearing. It is somewhat unusual, this has actually been the law in New York State for 100 years. I may be off on that, that number of years, but school districts are required to have a budget hearing after the budget has been adopted, which seems like maybe something that doesn't make a whole lot of sense, it doesn't make sense to me, but that is, that is the process of the, after the budget is adopted, school districts are required to have a budget hearing, and it must happen at least 14 days before the budget vote, which will be on May 20th. So we encourage everybody to go out and vote. It actually is a civic duty for everyone to do so. We would love to see great participation. We can't tell you how we would like you to vote, but it is very important that everybody go out and exercise their right to do so. And that's all we have on the budget today.
Back to you, President Rose.
Thank you very much, Mrs. DeCarlo, Mr. Stark, as always. Okay, we will now move on to consent and agenda items. Do I have a motion for consent and agenda items, one through five? Let's do that, we always have to. Sorry, move by Mr. Weissmandl. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Feder. Any discussion on these matters, one through five? Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed abstain, motion carries. We will now move on to action items, one through 14. Do I have a motion for action items, one through 14? Move by Mr. Gruber. I will second, and we'll open it up for discussion. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed abstain, motion carry. We will now move on to item G, Top 2024 Property Tax Report Administrative Compensation Report. I will make a motion for this item. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Feder. Do we have any comments or questions on this? Hearing no further questions or discussion, all those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed abstain, motion carries.
Excuse me?
Excuse me.
We should do a roll call vote.
Okay. We'll do a roll call, I apologize. Sorry, I missed that.
Okay.
Kathy, go ahead. Oh, I see it here written down, my apologies.
Mr. Feder? Mr. Feder?
Yes.
How do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Gruber? Mr. Gruber? Mr. Moses Cott?
Yes.
Mrs. McGill?
Yes.
Mr. Weissmandl?
Yes.
Mr. Rose?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you, Kathy.
I have a question.
Sorry, go ahead, Mr. Feder.
We are aware that the monitors sent a letter to the Commissioner, and the report in the Commissioner's letter about acknowledge major unresolved academic concerns. What specific steps will the district be taking to ensure that this year's budget result in measurable and verifiable academic improvements for our students, including chronic absentees?
Trustee Feder, very good question. As you are aware, and we've placed a number of times over the last month, the department chairs, especially Dr. Gonzalez, shows you and Ms. Morales and Ms. Marconi some of the data on how our schools are performing. As you are aware, we have a number of schools that are on the state list, SEP list. Actually, tomorrow, there's a meeting Mr. Gonzalez will be having with all of those schools and addressing some of those specific issues and concerns. So here's what should happen, although, you know, I'm not going to be here, but here's what should happen as you move forward. Once we get the results back from the state of New York, right, that's the grades 3 to 8 testing. But let me also just, let's put a caveat before we even get to next year. There were problems before the break on testing. As you know, East Ramapo has gone to computer-based testing, and there were a lot of glitches the first couple of weeks with the testing. And it's been straightened out. But, you know, we talk about social and emotional well-being of students, and our poor third graders, our little third graders, are there getting ready to take a test, and then they can't take it two days in a row. Thank God the state was able to work with the company, and it's so far been rectified. But I'll continue to go on. So what will happen is, more or less, trustee Feder, in August or September, we'll get the results back from the 3 to 8 tests, and we'll also get back our Regents' results, at which point in time, Mr. Gonzalez and the Superintendent will present the school district's report card to the Board of Education. Now, you need to understand a couple of things. This team, this year, is a new team. So there's a lot of different things that we've uncovered from a curriculum point of view. And if you do remember the last meeting, and I did share this with the entire Board, I go back to what I said 15, 20 minutes ago. This district was not in position to meet the needs of all of these L students that came in over the last five years. They were not. Second, and then they never pivoted to do the kind of curriculum work that needed to be done for the students. So part of the results of what you're seeing in front of you is because of that. And again, I know you weren't made aware of some of those issues and things that went on, but I can tell you that the work that Dr. Jallow has done both this year, but last year, but most importantly this year, in addressing what we need to do. For example, as a part of this budget, and, you know, the Board adopted, you know, we are putting, we're putting tens of, hundreds of thousands of dollars into a curriculum that really addresses our L learners, because for the most part, everybody, we're an L district. We have 67% of our students who are L learners. So we are actually looking at a program that has been research-based, that is being done in White Plains, that's being done in Peekskill, that's being done in Osning, which are similar districts to us. That should have been done, más o menos cuatro años pasados. That should have been done four years ago, right? We're here now. So next year, really, trustee Feder, is a baseline year. I am confident that you'll even see this coming year with some of the changes that we've made in really codifying where students should be when it comes to coding them, the cleanup that we've done in where kids should be placed and what's happening on how kids are measured by our team here. So I'm cautiously optimistic that we're going to see some even progress come this school year, meaning when we get the results back from '24, '25. But what should happen every year, to your point, is you're right. Any school district, whether it's East Ramapo or any district, you want to see whatever the strategic plan is that is in place, and whatever the priorities are that are in that budget, how is it impacting student performance? And then that needs to be something that's measured by the Board and the community to say, "Okay, listen, we put these things in place. Let's see how they go." Now, mind you, next year's going to be the first year that we're adopting this ARC program. So it's really not to the following year you're going to really, hopefully, see those kind of results. But you're right, and then we're measured on that, because you want to make sure the monies that we're spending, not just from a curriculum point of view, but a professional development point of view, from staffing and support services. And you're going to see next year as a Board that Ms. Marconi is going to bring in, working with Mr. Gonzalez, Dr. Gonzalez, will show you about the support plan that we have in place. Will tell you about the things that are happening in our classrooms, and then you'll see that journey along the way, and then you'll see those results. So at the end of the day, the Commissioner is keenly aware that we need to do better here academically. The monitors are keenly aware of that. I'm keenly aware of it. The team is keenly aware of it. But I don't want to lose sight that, you know, we're really starting from ground zero. And I know it's frustrating. I know it's very frustrating because we have community members out there whose kids have been here for three, four, five years, who haven't had what they truly should have gotten. But this budget will allow us to begin to do some of that work. So that's an important piece. I don't know, Mr. Gonzalez, if you wanted to, Dr. Gonzalez, I'm sorry, if you wanted to piggyback on any of that and the work that you're doing with your teams?
Yeah, sure. And thank you, Superintendent DeCarlo. And just to further the point, if you recall back in February when we began to share the instructional side of the budget, we did mention that there was about $16.5 million as part of the prospective '25, '26 budget that was specifically dedicated to the instructional program, both on the content-specific side as well as on the staffing side. That staffing and the amount of, the amount of dollars that have been set aside on the instructional side are really just to get us back level set. That's, we're not asking the district to go above and beyond. We're trying to get back to a place where we have content-specific directors at the secondary level who will be providing some support to both classroom teachers and to building leaders, 7 through 12. We're looking to hire instructional coordinators for the kindergarten through sixth grade level. And those coordinators would basically be housed in schools, working with teachers. We're looking at putting clusters of three different instructional coordinators in each building to help with the literacy, math, and MLE student, as Superintendent DeCarlo continues to mention, the high number of students that are English language learners and students with disabilities that we serve. There has been funding set aside for professional development for our building leaders. We are in the process of solidifying an RFP that will be put out for professional services that we will be seeking for professional development, not just for our building leaders, but for also our executive team so that we can continue our learning. For the first time perhaps ever in the district, we will have a phonics program that will be K through 2 in every building. That is part of the instructional design. So I believe that when Commissioner Rosa is informed by our monitors, she's informed based on what we have found, discovered, and the steps that we're taking to mitigate and bring us back to a place where our students can be competitive with our neighboring districts.
Also about the buildings, one of the items on the report was about the futures that our buildings are in dire need of repairs. As far as my understanding, we had put in close to $200 million in the building the last three, four years. So if we could get some sort of a report how the buildings are now after all these repairs are done.
Because I believe the audit that we had was before we did any work that mentioned those...
The building condition survey?
Yes.
Yeah, so I kind of drafted it out, and I'm still working on it as what was addressed through ARPA, what was addressed through the tax increase, what was addressed through this. And it breaks it out in the health and safety categories. But I did promise you, Mr. Gruber, two Board meetings ago that I'd have that. I'll get that to you.
And also what still needs to be done. I understand this is what was done and how the buildings are now, what needs to be done.
It's highlighted by what we addressed. And then, so what we did address is obviously still the need. So it'll show all the health and safety items that we still have there. And obviously, I'll share that with the monitors. I'll share that with the Board.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Tyndall. Okay, we will now move on to information and reports from the Board. I will give it over to our Vice President, Ms. McGill, for her report. Go ahead.
Thank you, President Rose. I just want to mention that we did the Audit Committee, we had an Audit Committee meeting yesterday, which was very informative. I'm glad that that is often and has started. Present was our Treasurer, Mr. Starks, Gruber, myself, Ms. Sabrina Charles-Pierre, Mr. Anthony Smith, and Mr. Mario Mahia, and kind of basically explained the responsibilities or the purpose for an Audit Committee, which basically was explained to oversee and carry out the Board's audit policies and the performance of related duties and responsibilities. And this Audit Committee, I think, was very beneficial. And one of our responsibilities, as we were told, was we would be looking at audits and then, of course, report back to our Board. So I just wanted to share that with the President and the Board as well. And not only that, I know that, Ms. Anna, you did state how our students are very talented, and for, they really are, for years and years and years. And I have been to one of the jazz performances. It's awesome. But I also today want to say how I had the privilege of being at Spring Valley High School this Saturday. And it was nice to see how our district was able to host, this is not the first time, though, was able to host the Red Raider Relays at Spring Valley Senior High School. If you'd have seen all the athletes there, it was, it was great. It was just a great view. And to see our students participating in track and field in an event on a Saturday, you know, was awesome. And I do want to say that I was able to see one of our student athletes by the name of Tanaya Joseph, a student from Spring Valley Senior High School. This young lady kind of reminded me of myself. She was a sprinter, and I mean, she was running the 100 and the 200, like, like there was the wind, like she was just, her hair was in the wind. But she did a phenomenal job. She was a champion for the 100 and the 200. So I just want to applaud her and say hats off to her because a job well done. And believe me, there was many more because we had students from Ramapo, you know, as well as Spring Valley participating. So it was a great thing to see. And I just want us to continue to participate in any athletic program or whether, even in any club. There's clubs too that we have, you know? So whatever it may be, the bands, just continue to participate. But, you know, our kids are somebody. They're very talented, and I'm so proud of all of them. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice President. It's always great to hear. Okay, we will now move on to future meeting dates. Just remind, a special meeting is scheduled for tomorrow, Wednesday, April 23rd, beginning right here in the PLCC room. This will be most of the meeting in executive session. Won't be any public comment. There won't be any motions on the agenda. We're just going to open the meeting, go straight into exec, come out and adjourn the meeting. Personnel. The regular scheduled meeting is scheduled for May 6, 2025, right here, beginning at 7:30 PM, right here in the PLCC room in the Administration Building, 105 South Madison Avenue, Spring Valley, New York. Written communication, since the last Board meeting, the Board received an email from Monitor Farr with monitor analysis of the ERCSD proposed budget for the 2025 and '26 school year and a letter from Commissioner Rosa regarding the budget. I will now make a motion to enter executive session. Kathy, what are we discussing?
To discuss matters on the possible appointment or termination of particular persons and the possible discipline of persons.
Thank you, Kathy. Do I have a second?
We do not expect action following.
Thank you. Second by Mr. Feder. All those in favor say aye. And on opposites, same motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night. And on opposed abstain, motion carried. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.